I will declare this meeting to or call this meeting to order and request the clerk to call the roll.
City Council members Brown?
Here.
Hazen?
Here.
Percy?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Wu?
Here.
And Mayor Marlin?
Here.
We appear to have a quorum. I would like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting and to, well, let's put that on the floor and then ask for any corrections or whatever.
I'll move we approve the minutes of March 25th.
I'll second.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
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 I believe there are no opposed. Are there additions to the agenda? Seeing no response to that, we'll move on to public input. And I see two cards and I know the mayor has a proclamation. I have one card from Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn Underwood on the Dr. Ellis subdivision problem. They do not choose to address members but are continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problem. And Eldress Melinda Carr chooses not to address members at this time but has continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues with respect to equity and historic impact. And Mayor Marlin?
So I'd like to read a proclamation tonight in recognizing National Library Week and recognize the service of library director Celeste Schott and our city council representative to the library board Sharice Hershey. And I also wanted to thank all the volunteers who have served on the library board over the years. It's a very, very important service. This is a proclamation. Whereas, the Urbana Free Library was established by city ordinance on June 16th, 1874, and is one of the oldest public libraries in the United States. And whereas, today's libraries are not just about books but what they do for and with people. And whereas, libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions where people of all backgrounds can be together and connect. And whereas, libraries build strong communities through transformative services, programs, and expertise, and by partnering with other civic organizations to make sure their community's needs are being met. And whereas, libraries, which promote civic engagement by keeping people informed and aware of community events and issues, and promote the free exchange of information and ideas for all, are cornerstones of democracy. And whereas, libraries empower their communities to make informed decisions by providing free access to information. And whereas, the Urbana Free Library has been a most endearing anchor in downtown Urbana, helping engage, strengthen, and revitalize the community, promoting literacy, providing access to a full range of resources, and is cherished by its residents today and will be for many years to come. Now therefore I, Diane Wolfe Marlin, mayor of the city of Urbana, do hereby proclaim April 7th through 13th, 2019, as National Library Week in the city of Urbana, Illinois.
So beautiful public input tonight. Do we have presentations? Seeing none. Yes, oh, that's Mayor Marlin, okay, you're in presentations.
Not exactly a presentation, but I just wanted to share some good news. The, and this is a tribute to the city of Urbana employees. They have stepped up, pun intended, to help a local tutoring program when we learned that the tutoring program at the Dublin Street Church of Christ led by Pastor Courtney Carruthers, who's coming in the door right now, was short on things like Chromebooks to help the kids. And it's a voluntary tutoring program over there. Step program there is called Sharing Thoughts on Effective Parenting. So the city of Urbana employees, this is completely voluntary on their part and an initiative coming from the employees, stepped up, collected donations, and collected a total of $1,235 to support this tutoring program for the youth in our community. And I just want to recognize the people who participated. AFSMI Local 1331, including employees in Public Works, Police Administration, and the Parking Division, Urbana Firefighters Local 1147, City of Urbana Arbor Division, Karen Snyder, Vassilia Clark, Jing Lee, Jim Simon, Carol Mitten, Elizabeth Hannan, Charlie Smythe, Preston and Monique James, Jason Liggett, Bryant Seraphin, Jamie Lance, John Schneider, Kate Levy, and myself. And together, it's just a remarkable effort coming out of city of Urbana employees who wanted to help this wonderful program. And I wanted to thank Pastor Carruthers for stepping up and starting this initiative, Neighborhood Based Tutoring Program, Saturday mornings for what age youth?
Fifth grade, 12th grade.
Fifth through 12th grade. Did you want to say anything about your program?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, city councilmen and women and mayor. First of all, I just want to say thank everyone, I want to thank everyone for the generous contribution. We are working with Ms. Elizabeth Sodoropoulos, I believe that's how you pronounce her?
Sodoropoulos?
Yes, thank you. She is doing a marvelous job and I thank God that she was elected to the school board. She has brought a lot of wisdom and direction to enrich and to make the tutoring effective. When we first started, we started out with two children and it grew to eight, and now we're up to 25 children. We had 18 on Saturday. We had them outside. We were able to purchase three Chromebooks. We had a mother who came by the building today, wanted to know what she can do to get her children involved in the tutoring. So it is a great work, and we do appreciate all the support that we are getting. We have combined our efforts with truce for the purpose of helping children who are not efficiently doing well in school, but those who have also been taken out of school so that they can keep their education, they can stay up on their education. We do have volunteers from the various cities. I'm just happy that everything's going well. I just want to encourage everyone to, if they can, to come by and see how we're doing. And our city councilwoman came by the place and gave us some information on how we do other things, so we thank you, Sharice, for your effort in that. I applaud you, and like our mayor said, thank you Mayor Marlin, this work would not be as effective as it has, as it is, if it had not been for the support, and we continue to ask for your support as well. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor Carruthers.
Okay, and this is, I think, winds up the presentations portion of the meeting, and I believe we have a staff report.
Yes, I just wanted to announce the successful auction of city-owned property at 917 North Lindview. That was held on April 3rd, and the property sold for $36,000. That was the highest bid. I'd like to thank Brandon Boyce, who was the team leader. We learned some things when we did the auction at 1301 East Washington, and we put those to use. And he led the team with Nick Hanson, Danae Pelmore, both housing inspectors, Randy Brigette, a housing rehab coordinator, and with the help of Kurt Borman guiding us through the legal aspect of the process. It's a good example of teamwork, I think, and it also shows what we can do with some abandoned properties. We've used some funding from the state to clean up the property, but this was an abandoned property that just sat vacant for about two or three years, and hopefully we can turn this into a program that we can do in the city for abandoned properties, so houses don't sit vacant for years and years and go back, you know, tax sale and then wait forever to get back on the tax rolls, and also provides an opportunity for affordable housing.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Carol?
No, I was ready to move on to the next.
Oh, to the next item. I guess I just would make a comment that this is actually way more, it seems to be potentially way more important than the $36,000 that's involved here as a precedent, so. Good for you guys. Yes, Carol?
I just wanted to make note of the fact that you have in your packet the annual report from the Environmental Sustainability Division, and here we have Scott Test, ready to answer your questions. Were you going to make a little presentation?
No, I was going to say just what you said.
Okay.
And also just mention that most of the programming that appears in the sidebars is continuing this year. We're just starting Solar Urbana Champagne 4.0 this year. Hopefully we'll start solar power hours this month. You can find those dates, they'll be posted soon, at solarurbannachampagne.org, or sorry, .com, solarurbannachampagne.com. Also, you'll see some information about our Natural Lawn Care partnership with the Institute for, Integrated Pest Management Institute. We're working with them on a grant application to get some funding so that we can continue that program again this year. And also wanted to mention that the fifth, is it fifth? No, the Wednesday of this month, this week, whatever the date is, we're going to be watching the state's incentive, the first incentive lottery for solar incentives that are closed, landfills, solar development will be entered into. So we'll be watching those results carefully. I'll take any questions you may have.
Yeah, Bill?
Yeah, on page three, on the greenhouse gas reduction progress. Remember in 2013, the residential program, we reduced greenhouse gases by using the municipal electric aggregation and renewable energy credits. On the bottom graph where it shows streetlights and traffic lights, looks like that's about half of what it used to be just over the last couple of years, and I was wondering what we did to do that, to reduce usage in streetlights and traffic lights.
So that split, in terms of what accounts are ID'd as streetlights and what are ID'd as facilities or buildings, comes from categorization that we get from a data export from AMRIN. So every year we request AMRIN to query their database for all of our accounts, and those accounts come with certain categorizations. And what appears to have happened is that some accounts were categorized one way one year and then a different way the next year. We followed up with AMRIN about this and pointed out how it just basically flipped, you know, the same amount came out of one of those categories and into the other. And they said, "The most recent data is the best." So we don't know which accounts they were, I mean, it's a big data set, so that's the reason.
Okay, yeah, that helps. I see now the green goes up a little bit, but overall, the green and blue together still go down, so that's good.
Right, right.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Hey Scott.
Hey.
Looks like we're almost on target to hit 25, our 2020 goal, maybe next year or whenever our 2018 results come in. Is that something we're expecting?
So with, so we have two greenhouse gas inventories. One is community-wide, the other is municipal buildings and operations. And we do one inventory every year, and so each one of those inventories we do every other year for two reasons. One, it's an investment in staff time to do the inventory, and two, there's not a lot of change that we should be observing from year to year, and so we do them every other year. So we should be expecting a 2019 greenhouse gas inventory for the community-wide first thing 2020. And so, yes, you know, the trend is good. We should be, you know, hopefully hitting that 2020 goal.
Awesome, looks great. And then our cumulative savings in the electrical aggregation seems to be decreasing, but of course, we've had a couple losses the last two years. How much longer is our agreement on that?
We have, I'm going off of memory, it's on our website, I think it's a year and a half left on the term.
Okay.
And then we'll be renegotiating, we'll be going out for bid with a broker again after that. So AMRIN resets their prices yearly, and, you know, we typically enter two- or three-year contracts.
And I got a piece of mail a little while ago about Urbana's composting survey to test the waters. Is that still going on, or is the survey, the survey over? I filled that, filled it out, but I can't remember if it was done or not.
Yeah, we closed it Friday, and the recycling coordinator, Courtney Kwong, is pulling together that data and analyzing it, and will be taking a look at what it tells us in terms of people's interests and willingness to pay.
Sure, thank you.
Yeah, Danae.
Yeah. Do you want to brief us a little bit about what a pledge to the natural lawn care, which you've collected pledges throughout the market for the square, allows a person, or what are the expectations for the homeowner?
Sure. So we're partnering with this organization, their logo's on the page seven, Integrated Pest Management Institute. We were formerly partnering with a similar sounding name, but they've merged now with the IPM. And so they have a program called Midwest Grows Green, and it's sort of a three-part program focusing on natural lawn care and natural landscaping. I say three-part in that they have three audiences: households, or, you know, single-family residences with a lawn or landscape; institutions that have lawns and landscaping, like the city of Urbana and the Urbana Park District; and retailers. And so what we've done in the past is, we've done public engagement, public education events for the households. We've worked behind the scenes with institutions. City of Urbana and the Urbana Park District both have committed certain portions of their landscapes to be chemical-free. And then the folks from IPM have worked directly in our community with grant funding to work with retailers to ensure that they have organic lawn care products and that they're labeled on the shelves. So the natural lawn care approach is, first of all, you know, not using chemicals or not using synthetic chemicals, but there are some other cultural practices that we encourage instead. So mow high, compost organically with compost from the Landscape Recycling Center, and core aerate your turf once or twice a year. Those are the three practices that we're encouraging instead of the chemicals, the weed and feed.
And then the, I've heard of the pest control, grandma says to soak water with garlic and then use that on your vegetables. I don't know if that works or not, but...
Yeah, there's a lot of those. Hot peppers as well, yeah.
Are there any other, yes, Bill?
I heard you mention those landfill solar, that was the first solar project? Or did you say something about the big one?
Yeah, the little one is operating. The large landfill solar development that we've been working on, we're partnered with the company Sun Power on that. They are submitting our project into the first of several lotteries, incentive lotteries with the Illinois Power Agency. So there's a bunch of different carve-outs for different types of solar projects, depending on the size, depending on the property, depending on the off-takers of the power, the buyers of the power. And some of those have way more projects in the pipeline than there's actually incentives to provide for. So what they're doing, unfortunately, they did not decide to go first come, first served. If they had, we would be first in line, we started early. But they've instead decided to do a lottery of all those projects. So the first lottery is Wednesday.
Is ours considered brownfield solar, or is it, what category is it?
That is, that is one of the carve-outs. That's a little bit, that's an opportunity a little bit further down the timeline. We're looking at that. The brownfield definition was a little bit tight, and it will take some additional rulemaking to ensure that we're clearly meeting it, although we clearly meet the general, you know, plain understanding of a brownfield. But because this, the landfill is so old, we don't have ongoing monitoring permits, we're not quite meeting the definition. So we'll see. We're lining up a bunch of different incentive opportunities. The first one for us is going to be this week.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Are there other staff reports tonight? Okay, we can then move on. Yes?
This being Library Week, I just wanted to mention that I had some compliments from constituents on how well the library handled some free speech issues a week or so ago. It was the same issue that Bob Neiman talked about with us last week.
Yes.
And two groups wanted to meet at the library at the same time, basically, and the library accommodated them very well by making sure they met in different rooms and had their, had their opportunities to meet and express themselves, and, you know, that's one of the things governments are good at, is allowing free speech, and that's one thing that's real important to us. So we can't control exactly all the time what other private organizations do as far as what they allow, but we can bend over backwards to allow what we can. So thanks, Celeste.
So I did, I promised Bob in public that I would do something about that, and I did send an urgent note to the Director of the Art Theater and have not had a response yet. So apparently he didn't feel it was as urgent as I did, but I will do something more about that. Yes, Diane?
I forgot to congratulate Celeste on five years as Director of the free and wonderful Urbana Library.
Yay. Urbana Free Speech Library. Any other presentations or upbeat congratulations or other inspiration before we move on to more mundane matters? Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2019-04-005-R, a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters, specifically the ASSIST Program Series 2019 from Community Development.
Good evening. The private activity bond cap is a bond issued by or on behalf of a local or state government for the purpose of financing a project or for private use. We've had two requests, one from the Illinois Housing Development Authority to be, to cede our bond cap to them. They'll put it out for bonding authority and use it for affordable housing projects. And then a second one, a request we had, was from ASSIST to do a mortgage credit certificate program that's been done in the community for quite some time. It's not an actual transfer of cash, it's a transfer of the opportunity to sell the bonds, and because we don't, we've done this partnership for quite some time. If we don't cede our opportunity for them to utilize our bonds, then it goes to the state of Illinois and they can use them. So we're happy that these two groups have come forward and will utilize them in our community.
Questions or comments? Yes, Danae.
And so we were offered the option to allow the bond cap to go to both by dividing the amount in half. Do you have any comments or guidance for us about which would be most useful to the community itself?
I think they both have great opportunities, you know, as the housing market, the homeownership opportunity is better now than it was a few years ago, this really offers those lower-income clients an opportunity to get a federal tax credit that is great. And then, you know, we've seen Ida do several projects in the community from Highland Green, Crystal View, they've made a lot of investments. And so I think that affordable rental as well as homeownership are both, both good projects.
Okay, okay, great. So equally valuable and perhaps...
I think so.
...for all recommendation, okay. Jared?
Sheila, is there, I know we do this probably one, every year. Is there any way that we get to see how our dollars last year went into, went into work prior to or going forward? If there's a way to, a way to see how they're using our dollars and what projects they're going towards and stuff like that?
Sure, going forward, definitely. I didn't start till November, so I feel like I'm not quite behind the wheel, but yeah, sure, going forward, we'll see that you do.
We just always like to...
Sure.
...see the effectiveness of, you know, substantial, substantial sums, so...
Right. We did provide a map that's in front of you that shows the down payment assistance that was provided through the ASSIST Program, but that's only about a five-to-six-year history. It's not a full 10-year history, so...
Just something to think about as we go forward, if we have a metric or something to say, "Hey, this one's to this and this one's to that." Thanks.
Danae?
Yeah, I have one other question that I realize I made a note of on my page. We're talking here about the mortgage credit certificates, bottom of page two, and it talks about the ASSIST Program, participating households are required to meet income and purchase price limits. And homes that meet the program's guidelines are new or existing, owner occupied, single-family homes, townhomes or condominiums. And so when it talks about townhomes and condominiums, is it possible that a developer could claim those tax benefits rather than an individual homeowner? If it's going to be a condominium and it's going to be rented and it's a new, new process, a new building, does the developer benefit from these?
I don't believe so, but I can check on it and get back to you. I think it has to be owner occupied.
So it has to be the owner? Okay, and we're getting a yes from the background there.
Yeah, good.
All right, great, thank you, because I think that's the most appropriate thing, and we wouldn't want that to be, you know, assigned erroneously to some not intended individual.
Right.
Mary Alice, are you still with us?
I am.
You sent me...
I think Jared covered my question.
You think Jared covered your questions? Okay, great.
Yep.
Other, any other questions or comments?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, yes, please.
All right, I move that Resolution 2019-04-005-R, which is a resolution approving the transfer of volume cap in connection with the private activity bond issues and related matters, and in parentheses we have here, ASSIST Program Series 2019, forward to the city council with approval.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Roberts and Mr. Miller, respectively. All those in favor, if there are no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? It seems the ayes have it. Okay, and the next item on the agenda?
I think we covered it. I'll make a motion to send Resolution Number 2019-04-006-R, Resolution Approving the Transfer of Volume Cap in Connection with Private Activity Bond Issues and Related Matters, Illinois Housing Development Authority Series 2019, to city council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that as well.
Okay. Any further discussion? Moved and seconded in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody seems to be opposed. And now, for the last item on the agenda, a resolution approving an amendment to an Urbana Home Consortium subrecipient agreement, which is, I lost my place here for just a second, which is Resolution Number 2019-04-007-R. And this is coming also from Community Development, please.
So in May of 2018, we allocated $35,000 to Rosecrans to operate a tenant-based rental assistance program. The program is a two-year undertaking where occupants can, during that two-year time period, can go to school, do job training, that the rental assistance gives them that opportunity of time to get their life in a little bit better path. And so the program has been very successful. Rosecrans has committed all of the funds, and in order to complete the two-year process, they need an additional $20,000. they need an additional $20,000. The City of Champaign has an allocation of their home funds that they are willing to give to Rosecrans to complete the project.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions? Yes, Jared?
Sheila, so we're making this on behalf of the Home Consortium, correct?
Right.
Okay. I was supporting this, so I'll go ahead and make a motion unless there's any objection. All right, I'll make a motion that we send Resolution Number 2019-04-007-R, a resolution approving Amendment Number One to an Urbana Home Consortium Subrecipient Agreement for Rosecrans, TBRAFY 2018, 2019, for an additional $20,000, be forwarded to the full Council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any further discussion on this motion? Yes?
So, you're saying that Champaign is donating also $20,000, or...
No, this is their portion, this is their $20,000. So, the City of Urbana acts as the lead entity for the home funds. A portion goes to Urbana, a portion goes to Champaign, and then the balance goes to the Regional Planning Commission for the county. And Rosecrans reached out and needed additional funding, and Champaign had a project that didn't go through, and so they're ceding their portion, or $20,000, for this.
Okay, so, we are required to pay the $20,000, or we're not required...
As the lead entity, we manage the project.
I was just trying to understand.
Just so, to be absolutely clear, we are going to pay it as the lead entity, but it doesn't have any impact on our general fund or our budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Any other concerns or issues to raise about this? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed? We've passed unanimously, and there being no further meeting before...
Yes, yes, Mayor Marlin, we should just say something.
One announcement, just a reminder, that the annual town board meeting is tomorrow night in this room, 6 o'clock, so that's Tuesday, April 9th, annual town board meeting.
I'm sorry, did you say 6 o'clock? Somehow I had the impression it was later, but that's not true.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Oh, good. Okay, thank you. Okay. There being no further business nor information, this meeting is adjourned.